You're listening to and joining in to the City of Iowa City formal meeting on December 15, 2020, and we're going to begin with roll call, please.
Fergus.
Here.
Ma'ams.
Ma'ams.
Here.
Kelly. Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
Well, welcome everybody to the City of Iowa City meeting again on this December 15. And the first agenda item is going to be proclamation to A. I did want to make mention that our mayor pro tem is not with us tonight and wish her well and great health, but we're going to move on to agenda item number two A, ambassadors of wintry cheer. And this is a proclamation stating, and I've got to put this on. All right. So whereas decorating for the wintry holiday spreads good cheer during our coldest and darkest months, and whereas when neighbors come together in support of shared cause, the community at large benefits from said actions. And whereas Rita Lynn Court has been recognized as a holiday decorating destination and commonly referred to as Sugar Plum Lane or the Christmas Light Street, and whereas current and former residents of Rita Lynn Court have been proponents of good holiday cheer for the better part of the street's 30-year existence, and whereas Rita Lynn Court neighbors will continue this year and many years into the future to spread good cheer and support for the Iowa City community. And now therefore, I Bruce T., Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim that the community of Rita Lynn Court shall be recognized as ambassadors of wintry cheer for the City of Iowa City in 2020 and the remaining days of 2020 and into 2021. I encourage all members of our community to spread good cheer, to support your neighbors and the community at large, and to find moments of joy in our great city, but please wear a mask and social distance while doing so. And here to accept this proclamation is Phil Sebeck. Welcome.
All right. Perfect. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Teague and council members for this proclamation. I accept it on behalf of all the families of Rita Lynn Court. Each year we try to add more lights and glitz to our displays because we enjoy it and our kids enjoy it, and frankly, we like the attention of the folks who visit our little court. This year, we've got a new addition to our displays. Thought we'd have camera on, but you'll notice them if you drive down there, there are some yard signs that promote and encourage those who enjoy our lights to share a donation with table to table. In late October, when we first began discussing this idea around the block, I had hopefully speculated that maybe by partnering with a nonprofit, we could maybe raise a couple hundred bucks. And, you know, we're halfway through December and we've eclipsed that expectation four times over, and we've raised enough funds for table to table to rescue over 4,000 pounds of food so far. Traffic is only picking up to the end of the holiday season here. This generosity by our light people showcases the power of community to come together for a shared cause, and it's an honor to witness such a shining example of Iowa nights. As Iowa Cityans are driving down our street, their view is of our twinkly lights and inflatable penguins, but our view is of the goodness and holiday spirit of passersby who are helping to make Sugar Plum Lane into a true winter wonderland. So from our street to yours, we hope our lights help you discover some wintry cheer, and we wish happy holidays to all and to all a good night.
Sound like there is quite a few people there. We should have had the camera on. All right. Thank you all, and good wintry cheer to everybody here in the City of Iowa City. All right. We are moving on to items three through eight, which is our consent calendar items. Could I get a motion to approve, please, as amended?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Thomas.
All right. If anyone from the public would like to address any item within the consent agenda, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. I also want to just make mention that if there's an item that's not here, we'll also have a community comment following this for any item not on the agenda. And if you want to raise your hand, there is a little hand waving button that you press and then press star nine on your phone. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Fergus.
Yes.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Lee. Oh, sorry. Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passes six with one absence. All right. Item number 10, we're going to go into item number nine, which is a time for community comment. And as I just previously mentioned, this is an opportunity for anyone that is not, for any item that is not on our, on our agenda at all, that you would like to address the council, if you would like to address at this time, please raise your hand or press star nine on your phone. And the first person, it is I, P R O G Z one, please state your first and last name, please.
How you doing? My name is Steven Keever.
Steven, repeat your last name.
Keever, K E V E R.
Thank you.
My question has to do with employment opportunities in Iowa City, Iowa. I know currently that you guys are looking into affordable housing, you're looking into a couple of other things, but what are we doing to progress or to be able to utilize the University of Iowa's technical training or schooling to bring it into the community? Because I know in the past couple of years, there's been a large commodity of people leaving our district versus otherwise. And for the most part, I live in Colorado right now, but I'm an Iowa City resident, planning on moving back because my kid lives there. But the issue being is there is no larger economic stability there for me at this point. Like, it's pretty much university or something within the government in order to be able to stabilize anything. So my question is, what are you guys doing to give more skills or to be able to regulate or standardize any of the current jobs to create better opportunities?
And I should have just made mention that council typically do not respond during this time, but we do hear your comment and appreciate you raising that with us and sharing your thoughts on that with us. We do allow three to five minutes. Would you like to continue your time or are you done with your comments for now?
No, that's fine. It's completely fine. Do you know, is there a better time to bring this up? Because this has been a consistent issue my entire life. I've lived in Iowa City for 25 plus years, so I mean, a lot of my friends are moving out of this city, moving to bigger opportunities, and that's a problem for me.
I would encourage you to reach out to the City Direct, City Manager's Office, or to any of the councilors through email or by phone. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'm going to move on to Nicholas. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. I'll have quite a bit to say about the annexation later tonight, but I wanted to address something that sort of broadly came up in the work session. Well, not even broadly, there is a specific instance of this. So in the past, several of you had expressed an interest in the cahoots model in terms of dealing with community relations and how to restructure policing. So I have to say, I was actually incredibly shocked to find that the city manager's recommendations not only included nothing from that model, but he actually felt the need to openly and publicly degrade it. So I was just going to suggest, as you are all thinking about, you know, his recommendations, you might want to actually ask your city manager why he felt the need to denigrate a model that has not only been suggested by many, many community members, but also has been favored by yourselves. I mean, I think that's a reasonable question to ask him. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Would anyone else like to address council? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one. All right, we are going to move on to 10A. Our plan in the zone of matters of 10, and the first item there is 10A, which is the Carson Farm Annexation. This is a resolution to annex approximately 196.17 acres of land located west of Highway 218 and south of Rorit Road. And the applicant requested referral. Additional correspondence included in the 1214 late handouts gave us some informations there. Could I get a motion to defer to one to January 5, 2021?
So moved, ma'ams.
Second, Weiner.
All right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand, and I will call upon you. If you're on the phone, press star nine, and we ask that people keep their comments three to five minutes. Welcome, Nicholas.
Thank you again, Mayor. I guess I could have included this in my earlier comments, but I wanted it to be attached to the specific issue at hand. I don't really have a lot to say that I haven't said in the past, so I'm going to be brief. I would actually like to personally thank councilors Thomas and you yourself, Mayor, for actually debating this issue and for doing something that I think is really important because in the discussion in the work session about this annexation, several people tried to make it seem as if like, oh, well, you know, this is just this stage of the process. You know, this is just a limited thing. It's not a limited thing. What both of you recognized quite astutely is that, in fact, this is what gets the whole process underway in the first place, that by doing this and by the city actually committing to, you know, provide infrastructure and to annex this, to, you know, include it in the city quite literally, like that gets the ball rolling, and that's what actually ends up committing the city to a lot of decisions that later down the line, you may not necessarily want to make. And I actually wanted to praise both of you for recognizing that fact and actually trying to think through what the ramifications of these decisions are. And so, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Nicholas. Would anyone else like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Sarah Barron. Welcome.
Hi, council. Mayor Teague, I love your tie. I just wanted to emphasize a point that was raised by Councilor Weiner and reinforced by City Attorney Dilks, that you will have many opportunities to weigh in on this project. But if you do the annexation on the 5th, you will be agreeing to the current terms of the annexation policy, which will mean that you'll ask the developer to commit 10% of the units to affordability for a period of 20 years. That may be what you want to go forward with, but if it isn't, I think it's worth considering a review of that before you make that decision because that will govern what you can ask for from the future. And so I don't want to see that opportunity squandered if you want to put additional requirements or restrictions on the annexation that you're offering. I think there's a lot of wonderful potential here to consider. We're really looking forward on partnering with it. I can't speak for our nonprofit partners, but I will say that I think you have some nonprofit developers in the area who would be more than happy to work with the developer to create some really outstanding affordable housing opportunities in the neighborhood if you choose to go that route, but will want to have the strongest foundation possible to build on. And so I just wanted to remind you of that and offer that if you'd like to discuss that in more detail before your January 5 meeting, we would be very glad to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Please raise your hand if so. Seeing no one, council discussion. I'm going to do a voice vote on this, so all in favor say aye. We just saw Martha raise her hand. I think with Zoom, we're in the, we're in the middle of a vote. So all in favor say aye one more time. Aye.
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 Any oppose? Hearing no one. It passes five to zero. We're going to move on to item number 10B. This is Carson Farm rezoning. And this is an ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 1.96.17 acres of land located west of Highway 218 and south of Rorit Road from county residential and county urban residential to interim development, single-family residential zone. And I'm going to open the public hearing. All right, and public discussion, and Martha, welcome.
Thank you. I wasn't quick enough on the draw. I am glad that this annexation and rezoning are getting more scrutiny. As you all know, that my, my commitment in every aspect of my life is to think about how we can address environmental issues that we've kind of created for ourselves. And so when I look at this annexation and the rezoning, I want to circle back to a conversation that got started with Mayor Throgmorton last fall, which is to question single-family zoning as a concept. The city of Minneapolis has done away with single-family zoning. Now, when I say get rid of single-family zoning, that doesn't mean just go to multifamily. It means allow, there's, there's a list of ways that you can consider this, and in different types of neighborhoods, you might do it differently. But when you get away from single-family zoning, you could do a duplex or a triplex. And currently, those are only allowed in corner lots in certain areas. And if you look at the documents that were prepared by the city, you can see that there's almost no duplex permits being issued. And when you have single-family zoning on large lots, that means houses that are $300,000, $400,000, $500,000. So you've got an economic equity issue there when you're not only allowing these large lots, medium lots, and single-family units. So by introducing more diversity, you're actually reducing some of those unit costs so you can have more economic diversity in your community. The other piece is if you want to do a little research on our current way of doing subdivisions, it's deeply embedded in classism and racism. So if you do a search for history, single-family zoning racism, or history, single-family zoning classism, you're going to find in pretty short order that this vision of the American dream that has been pushed on us was actually created to exacerbate classism and racism. Now, I'm not saying that our current approach inherently does that, but I'm saying that it creates the opportunity to not make it better or possibly make it worse. And then there's the environmental piece, because when you space units further apart, you've got more linear feet of sewer, more linear feet of water, you've got trash trucks have to travel further, human beings have to travel further between units, there's more lawn to mow, there's more concrete to pour, it's tremendously inefficient. And these types of developments tend to promote and even codify the requirement for large units, which larger units use more materials and require more energy to operate. So you've got, you've got knock-on effects from an environmental standpoint. And then there's the cost issue to the city, because the city absolutely does not charge enough for, for the extension of sewer and water and roads to cover your costs for maintaining these spread out units. They're very inefficient. And if you look at studies of the income from tax revenue in communities, these types of neighborhoods are terrible. They're a big drain on city services. So I think you need to step back and do a serious reevaluation. I'm very concerned about the comprehensive plan because I currently have not, I am not aware of, I'm not saying it hasn't been done, but I am not aware of, of an analysis of the comprehensive plan through the lens of race, of class, and of the environment. And if we don't start looking at our planning through those lenses, we're not going to change the way we do it. You can't just keep, you know, chugging these units out like it was, like they didn't have any impact. They have a big impact. And so the last closing thing I want to say is that I remember one of the council members last year when this came up, when Throgmorton said, maybe we need to allow duplexes and triplexes by right rather than by exception, the comment was, well, this is going to be hard. Yeah, it's going to be hard because you have comfortable people who want to continue being comfortable, and they want to live their comfortable lives in the way that they're used to without having to question things. And it's your job looking forward and forecasting and looking at the broader community. It is your, your position where you have that ability to look more broadly at the impacts of what you're doing. And sometimes you're going to have to say no to the comfortable people when they ask to not be made uncomfortable, because chances are high that when you make choices to keep the comfortable people comfortable, that there are unintended consequences for people who are already uncomfortable. And when we start looking hard at these issues of social equity and environmental equity, we have to start challenging the comfortable people. And I know it's going to be hard, but I know you're up to the task. Thank you.
Martha. John Yap, welcome.
Sorry, I had to unmute. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just to be clear, and to reiterate the documents we have submitted, our request is, is not for single-family zoning. Our request is for a mixed-use, mixed-income neighborhood. Working for two or three years with planning staff to design that neighborhood. With that, we have requested deferred tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand or on the phone, press star nine. Seeing no one, council discussion. Could I get a motion to continue the public hearing and defer first consideration to January 5, 2021?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, ma'ams.
And I'm going to do a voice vote. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes five to zero.
Isn't it six?
I'm sorry.
Mr., yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think.
Six to zero. Yes. All right. Item number 10C.
Mayor.
Yes.
Could we accept correspondence for 10A?
Absolutely. We're going to go back to 10A. I was trying to get Martha comment up there. So 10A, can I get a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved, Fergus.
Second, Weiner.
And all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Item 10C. Rezoning at 400 North Clinton Street and 112 East Davenport Street. Ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 12,000 square feet of land located at 400 North Clinton Street and 112 East Davenport Street to planned high-density multifamily residential. And can I get a motion to give second consideration?
Move second consideration, Thomas.
Second, Fergus.
All right. And would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand and keep your comments three to five minutes, please. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
I'm here. Ma'ams.
Yes.
Lee. Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus. Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, ma'am.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Item 10D, zoning code amendment, PRM zone bonus provisions ordinance. This is an ordinance to amend Title 14 zoning to allow minor adjustments and planned high-density multifamily residential zones for new construction projects which involve preserving a separate historic structure. Can I get a motion for a second consideration?
So moved, Fergus.
Second, Taylor.
And would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Ma'ams.
Yeah.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 10E rezoned four acres at Myrtle Avenue and South Riverside Drive. Ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately four acres of land located at Myrtle Avenue and South Riverside Drive to riverfront crossings, West Riverfront District Zone. And the applicant has requested expedited action, and the correspondence was in our council packet.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived, that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Move by ma'am, seconded by Thomas. And would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Welcome, Angie Jordan.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I could be totally wrong on this part, so if it is, let me know. The South Riverside Drive rezoning, I just want to just express how exciting it is to see that area getting rezoned. I think this is the part that's having consideration for the tunnel. I believe that's right, and I think that's super exciting. I just want to remind council and all those listening that on the south side, we also would love to learn more about this process for that Highway 6 and getting access, business access, neighborhood access, they're going to have so much with that entry-exit access point, and I think that's absolutely awesome, and just want to make sure that we get some information so that we can maybe do the same thing one day in our side of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Ma'ams.
Yes.
Lee. Oh, sorry.
Motion passes six to zero. And could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved.
Second, Weiner.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Council discussion. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ms. Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Motion to accept correspondence.
So moved, Ms.
Second, Burgess.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Item number 10F, zoning code amendment changes to the Riverfront Crossings West Riverfront Sub-District Ordinance. And this is an ordinance to amend Title 14 zoning to expand the West Riverfront sub-district boundaries and to increase the maximum bonus height in the West Riverfront Sub-District to seven stories for properties north of and near the Iowa Interstate Railroad. And the applicants have requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed be suspended. That the second consideration vote be waived, that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Welcome, Martha, and we ask that people keep their comments three to five minutes.
All right, so while I'm on the phone, I thought I would take the opportunity to mention that the density bonus can be awarded based on a number of criteria. And I'm sure you all acutely remember this from the Court Street Project. At this time, the Riverfront Crossings density bonus does not require certain energy performance standards to achieve, receive a density bonus. You have a menu of options. This stands in stark contrast to the TIF requirements that says you must meet this level of energy efficiency. I think it's high time that the council apply the same criteria. Basically, just translate over that TIF criteria to the Riverfront Crossings. And I know the city manager wants to go through a whole process, but we already went through that process for the TIF component with the developers, with interested parties in the community. I, you're not, it, it's been litigated in the public, so to speak, in the TIF process. It would be a pretty straightforward option to just say, look, we're going to apply the same criteria here to the density bonus. And I think it's overdue to have this conversation. So I encourage you to press for this conversation. And I will remind you that the council members have the option to just choose to vote to make this decision and to, to say, we're not going to wait to reopen this public comment process that we've already invited the stakeholders to on one occasion. Just translate over the policy for the density bonus. And if you're going to expand your zone with an increased density bonus, it just increases the need and importance for that energy requirement tied to any density bonus. Just like affordable housing is tied to any density bonus. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Welcome. And this is, and I am. What, please state your name and first and last name.
Stephen Keer, in representation of the zoning laws in Colorado, they have done something similar to the affordable housing as well. It did not turn out well. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Stephen. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Ms.
Second, Thomas.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 10G. Is French Area Resonant Rapid Creek Road Northeast Letter to Johnson County Planning and Zoning Commission in support of a rezoning from county agriculture agricultural to county residential for approximately 40.62 acres of property located in unincorporated Johnson County south of the Rapid Creek Road Northeast and Rapid Creek Trail Northeast Interstate Intersection in Fringe Area A outside of Iowa City's growth area. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Ms.
Second, Thomas.
And staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Danielle Sitzman, Naverin Development Services. This is an application for rezoning shown in the dotted white line here. If you're not familiar with those street intersections is generally north of I-80 and east of Highway 1. At this time, Yellow Rock LLC, the property owner, would like to rezon the parcel to develop a county subdivision. Because this land is subject to our fringe, our current fringe agreement, it's coming before you tonight for recommendation to the county on that rezoning decision. If the rezoning is approved, the applicant intends to develop a county subdivision and devise land and the land into approximately seven single-family lots. City approval of that subdivision would be a separate application and also subject to our fringe agreement. This property is, as I mentioned, within the fringe area, area A. It is outside the city's growth area located in this portion of the city. A portion of our fringe area agreement, I should say. The current comprehensive plan for Johnson County calls for it to be agricultural uses, very limited residential development, 40 acres or larger in size. So this would be a change from the existing conditions. Talking a little bit about the existing conditions, this shows the surrounding county zoning. It's currently agriculturally zoned and they're requesting to change it to a county rural zoning designation. A little bit of context. The southern half of the property is Woodlands Natural Open Space and contains a creek with a floodway associated with it. Development would have to respect those flooded areas and cluster away from that. We do use two criteria for reviewing rezonings. Again, our fringe area agreement embody representing the comprehensive planning perspective from the city. We also look at the county's comprehensive planning and compatibility with the neighborhood. As I said, our fringe agreement is the component, a component of the city's comprehensive plan that applies to areas outside of the city's jurisdiction that we don't plan for in our district or sub-district plans. Does provide guidance for areas within two miles of the city's corporate limits. I also mentioned, we look at the county's comprehensive plan. The county, county has recently updated its comprehensive plan, so it's a bit out of touch with our current fringe agreement, which we're currently updating with county staff. And we'll eventually get to a new fringe agreement for you to adopt. This shows the areas that the county has included in their long-range planning as appropriate for residential. Again, the subject property is highlighted in that green color. This would result in residential development of a character fairly similar to what's in the vicinity already, which is larger lot rural development. I'm sorry, back up a slide. Sorry about that. As I said, the county's comprehensive plan is a little bit more current than our current fringe agreement. So there's a bit of a conflict, however, looking forward to what staff has anticipated. The revised fringe agreement would embody, we don't see that as a long-term conflict. This area is well beyond the city's intended growth boundary. It would be appropriate for county-style residential development. As I said, this does go on, proceed on to the county for final approval. They go through a recommendation process with their planning and zoning commission as well before supervisors. And so based on a review of the relevant criteria, including the future land use planning that the county has done and that staff is currently, city staff is currently working with the county to update our fringe agreement. We did recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. And it's December 3rd, meaning the planning and zoning commission concurred with that and also recommended approval to you tonight. I'm happy to answer questions.
No questions, all right. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand and keep your comments three to five minutes. Welcome, John.
Sorry, I was muted. John Yap, representing the applicant here to address any questions.
Any questions to the applicant? Hearing none. And I believe we have Stephen. Welcome, Stephen.
How you doing? My question is, is you guys have further development standards you guys are going to comply with? Or is this going to be a continuous thing? I am sure members of the community would like to know what's going to happen with their areas or if any new monetary value is going to be added to their houses or taken away.
And Stephen, just so that you know, typically a developer, we allow counselors to ask questions. But anyone from the public that would like to address the topic, we just ask for you to give your comments on this item. But we heard you and thank you for sharing. Would you like to add anything else? Thank you, Stephen. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Council discussion.
Basically, to be clear, and I'm still not 100% clear on what, on, on the fringe areas, but it sounds as if basically this is not something that we really have any say over. Is that correct? But that we're just sort of being consulted because it's in this fringe area, but it's not within our projected growth areas?
We don't make the final decision. I mean, we weigh in, we can weigh in on it and let the county know our thoughts, but the decision lies with them.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item number 11, Idowild Drainage Diversion. Resolution approved in project manual and estimate cost for the construction of the Idowild Stormwater Drainage Diversion Project. Established amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing. And staff presentation, please.
I'm Jason Reichert, Senior Civil Engineer at the City of Iowa City. Excuse me. So this is a presentation for the Idowild Stormwater Drainage Diversion Project. To give you a little background on the project, after the 2008 flood, we experienced some inundation on Foster Road that prevented access to critical infrastructure and neighborhoods in the peninsula area and access to our wells, our water wells. Stanley Consultants completed a study in 2009 evaluating potential flood mitigation options for this area. Following that study, we hired HDR and they looked at, excuse me, the feasibility and impacts of constructing the various flood mitigation alternatives discussed in the Stanley report. And from those results, HDR recommended rerouting off-site drainage to around Idowild to alleviate pumping needs and reduce the risk of flooding caused by locally heavy rains. Council then directed staff to evaluate the drainage area flowing into the Idowild subdivision and determine the best method to reroute the off-site stormwater based on HDR's recommendation. In the current project, we hired HR Green to complete a study of the drainage system. Approximately 80 acres drains into the Idowild subdivision and determine bypass alternatives that could be used. Like I said, they evaluated this watershed and identified deficiencies within the existing storm sewer system and developed two alternatives at a preliminary level. We then continued working with HR Green to evaluate the results of that study, determine the best alternative and design that desired alternative. The alternative that we arrived at was essentially an open swale, as you can kind of see on the image on the right, with storm piping going under Foster Road and Taft Speedway. This project will also include a bid alternate of a small pump station. Throughout the study phases, we have conducted a number of public meetings with the surrounding neighborhoods and interested parties. City staff has also met with the Idowild HOA and the Forest View developers to discuss stormwater concerns related to the existing and anticipated post-development stormwater management in the watershed north of Idowild that drains to the subdivision. As a part of these discussions, there's particular interest from the neighborhood to include a pump station with the project. And as I said, we are including that as a bid alternate with this. So the stormwater diversion portion of the project is funded by the Stormwater Utility. And again, city plans to include a small pump station as a bid alternate. And I'd like to make the distinction at this point that the stormwater diversion addresses flooding concerns in the storm sewer system as part of a locally heavy rainstorm. The pump station would be part of a larger flood mitigation system that would work in tandem and, and be more beneficial during river flood events. And based on the consultant's recommendation, a pump station isn't necessarily required to for the, the diversion portion of the project. However, like I said, as, as part of a larger flood fighting effort, a pump station could be beneficial. So as I've stated, the diversion portion of the project is funded by the Stormwater Utility. And then based on how bids come in, any extra funds will be used is funding towards the pump station if the budget allows. And if there is a funding shortfall, depending on, again, how bids come in, we have discussed potential funding agreement with Idowild HOA to cover the difference. And with that, if there's any questions?
Thank you, Jason. Hearing no questions. Would anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, raise your hand and keep your comments through the five minutes, please. Welcome, Terry.
Yes, hello.
Hello.
Yeah, great. So I'm Terry Chait and I own several condos at Idowild. And I've been active in that community since its inception. The original developers at Idowild in the early 1990s worked closely with the city to design a water control system that would move excess rainwater through a retention area on the corner of the Idowild property into their newly built ponds and then through underground pipes. And it would move that water into the river. For many years, that system worked just fine, but over time, then as, as Jason talked about, there was more construction in the surrounding area up on the peninsula. And as streets and sidewalks and buildings went up, more water runoff was increased in the development at Idowild. This was especially problematic in 2008 when Idowild experienced catastrophic flooding, which was brought about by several events at the same time, not just by the runoff, but by. the overtopped reservoir, which happened because there was so much rain coming down from the north in the river. There was heavy rains for weeks. The river was backed up and clogged at the Park Road Bridge area. And there was a copper dam in the Iowa River and at Iowa Avenue. And there was the runoff from the bluffs that are about 80 acres north of Idowild. The good news is that there's so much that has happened since then, the Idowild owners financed and built a berm around the development. They installed sluice gates which, which shut off the water pipes between the Idowild ponds and the river so that the river water can't back, back up into the ponds and flood Idowild. The city has raised Park Road Bridge, you know, that's has allowed for easier flow of the river and hopefully less debris to get clogged in that area. The copper dam is gone out of Iowa, from Iowa Avenue. So all of those things are great. And tonight to have this, this last piece starting to fall into place is wonderful. We're just, we are, all of us at Idowild are very excited to see this final piece of the project happening that, that will hopefully help control the water in this area. And we'd like to thank the city planners and engineers who had the insight to develop the project. And thank you to the mayor and the city council for putting aside funding and discussing and supporting this project. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Terry. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Welcome, Tammy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tammy Craft. I'm the current president of the Idowild condominium owners association. And I just wanted to briefly echo Terry's comments and express our appreciation and our excitement that this project is continuing. Diverting this runoff water away from Idowild would be a huge improvement to our area during heavy rainfalls. And we thank you and urge council approval of this next step.
Thank you, Tammy. Would anyone else like to address this topic? All right, seeing no one. I am going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Weiner?
Second, Taylor.
Move by Weiner, second by Taylor. Counsel discussion?
Well, I will be in support. So I'll have to say, over the years, my 11 years on council, I've certainly had a lot of conversations and meetings with members of the Idowild area. And this, this is a huge, huge piece for them. And as they indicated, finally get this final piece in place. It's been certainly a challenge over the years in terms of responsibility on various issues. And I'm glad that our city staff and the members of that development have been able to work together and get this final piece in place and that we hopefully will be willing to supply that funding so we can get this done and protect that area.
Want to thank Jason for his presentation. And I'm also like Susan, I'm very glad and happy to see this. It's a much needed project for a long time, as we'd heard from the neighbors in that area, a big improvement for this neighborhood and, and very happy to see it and vote for it.
I'm going to support this tonight as well. I think my question went to who's responsible? You know, and so what I do know is that when, when I heard about, which was presented very informatively by Terry about all the things that happened that contribute to the flooding over in, in this area. And so the city did a lot of investment. We raised the Park Road Bridge and did other things to really ensure that some of the issues with the water over in this area are at bay. And Jason did a great job, even though he fumbed through his beard a little bit. Yeah. So I'm going to support this tonight. All right. Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgis?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 12, unbiased policing. This is an ordinance and it is up for pass and adopt. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved, Thomas.
Second, Taylor.
And would anyone from the public like to address this topic? Welcome, Nicholas.
I'm just gonna beat the dead horse again. I'll just reiterate the same points that I made last time, even though I know you're all going to pass this anyway. I would like to reiterate that every single one, as your, as your own city manager's summary statement about this ordinance says very clearly, all of these policies were already in place when literally last year, an ICPD police officer racially profiled the black man so egregiously and in cahoots with a county attorney, no less, so egregiously that a federal judge felt the need in public court to scold both of them for what they had done. That's almost unheard of. So, I mean, you're going to pass it. I'm, I can't change your mind. No one can change your mind. You all think that this is a great idea, but it's, it's, it's not going to do anything. And I wish you guys would understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Would anyone else like to address this topic? All right. Kevin Sanders, welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. How are you?
Happy to, happy you're with us tonight.
Thank you. As president of the Iowa City NAACP, I would like to state at this time that we are definitely in support of the city movement forward with this ordinance. And I would also like to reiterate that this is just the first step. I have been meeting with the interim chief as well as the other chiefs throughout the county. And there are plans to address a lot of the concerns in regards to discrimination, racial profiling. And I will also say that Iowa City law enforcement has had their issues, but I do know that they are trying their best to make sure that preventative measures are in place for 2021. So on that note, I'm very in support of passing this ordinance. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one. Counsel discussion?
I'm very much in support of this. I think it speaks to the values of our city and our, our staff and our, and I believe our police department. Without any, without addressing any, the individual instance, I think you can express your values and have it very important to put that out there publicly and in this form. It doesn't mean that we accept when people don't do the right thing, but simply because there might be a case, someone not doing the right thing is not a reason to not pass something like this that strongly expresses our values and how we want things to, to work with our officers and their interaction with the public. So I strongly support this.
All right, I'm going to agree with Councilor Mims 100%. I believe that this speaks to our values. And I, and I'm, when we're talking about equitable treatment, if you read the ordinance, it really does talk about how we envision and what we plan to do. And so this is right up the line as to what I believe ours, of what we want our Iowa City to look like, how we want our Iowa City Police to operate. And very much so in support of this. And hopefully, as it has in the past, it has passed. So that's what I'm looking forward to.
I'm also very much in favor of this because I think it is very important to, to have it codified into an ordinance and have it right there in black and white. So I'm, I'm in favor of this.
Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgis?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item number 13, announcement of vacancies new. Applications must reside in, applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. And this is a senior center commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31st, 2022. And applications must be received by 5:00 PM, January 26th, 2021. Can I get a motion to approve the correspondence?
So moved.
Second, Thomas.
And all in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Item 14, announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM, December 29th, 2020. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals, licensed electrician, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Northside, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Wood Lawn, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Telecommunications Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We are at item number 15 with this, which we will welcome Ryan Longnecker. If he is present or Anna. I don't see them tonight. They're with University of Iowa Student Government. And of course, we wish all of our university students a nice little break for those that aren't continuing in some fashion for a little bit over the winter. And we're at item number 16, city council updates. Jump right in there, counselors.
I'll start then, because I, this is fresh on my mind. I, earlier this afternoon, I had the opportunity to tour the streets, public works facility and fire training tower out on Napoleon Drive. Thank you to Brock and I, I don't remember the other person's names. There was a group of us there from the different heads of the departments at the building there. It's, it's just an amazing facility. For those of you who have not been out there, I would encourage you to arrange a tour of it. It's just massive. And I just think that the entire grounds area was in the council budget a few years back. And I was part of that. And I just say it's money well spent. It's just a wonderful facility. A lot of thought and planning went into it and it's just very impressive. So thank you, Brock and Ron, as I said, but I'm sorry, I don't remember the other names of the other individuals. But do take, take the time to, to take a tour of that facility. It's really wonderful. The other thing I'd like to say with the holidays coming upon us very quickly, there's still time to buy local, buy local out there. A lot of the, a lot of the stores, local stores even have online options, but others of them are allowing folks to come in with a mask, a limited number of folks in there. But, but do that. There's some wonderful shops downtown and in the local area. And happy holidays.
Mayor, I just wanted to note that our Truth and Reconciliation Commission is getting underway. And I know we already have members of the commission who are active and, and you know, sort of holding that mantle as commissioners and representing us very well in, in the community. So I'm just very excited for that work to get underway. And I just really appreciated our work session this evening and just want to say, as we end the year, Black Lives Matter. And I'm so excited to continue our commitment heading into 2021. Thank you.
I thank you for that, Counselor Burgis. I would actually just like to recognize the passing of Marvin Bell. He was the, he died yesterday. He was the first, sorry, there's a dog barking in the background, can't do anything about that. He was the first poet laureate of Iowa. He wrote more than 20 books of poetry and taught for 40 years at the Iowa Writers Workshop. And, and he also wrote a poem that was part of the submission for Iowa City's application to be a UNESCO City of Literature. And I consider reading the poem. I don't think I'm going to do that this evening, but, but he was, he was a really meaningful voice and presence in this community for many years.
You know, I'll just comment, like, I don't know why, it's kind of skipped my mind that this actually was our last meeting of 2020 until Counselor Burgis said that. And I do want to wish everybody all the best through the remainder of the year. I know most of us are anxious to put 2020 behind us and for a much better year as the vaccine is rolling out. And what that will mean for our economic situation. But in the meantime, encourage everyone to, you know, stay safe, continue to mask up socially distanced. I've talked to people recently who are really sad, very, very sad about the holidays, not getting together with family, when they always get together. And so this is a real challenge for people. And I, as I've said to people, and I, we've all heard and read, you know, we, we stay apart now so we can be together in the future. We don't want to get, you know, our friends and family sick and lose them. So we need to tough it out for a few more months until we can get more and more people vaccinated. And hopefully by late spring, early summer, things will look a lot different. In the meantime, thank you to all of our city staff who have done just an incredible job in the last, gosh, what have we been now? Nine or 10 months, basically doing this. And while I know we'll discuss it in our next meeting, I do just want to say to Jeff, thank you very much to you and all of the staff who put together just an incredible document for the community and for us as counselors to digest and react to in terms of policing in Iowa City. It's just a phenomenal document. And there's no way, we discussed early on who was going to do this. And I'm very, very appreciative of the fact that you suggested and recommended that the staff do this because certainly reaching across all of your staff, there's the expertise and the deep thought that us, that we as counselors couldn't, could never have brought to the table. So you've given us a very, very good place and the community a very, very good place to start from. I hope people will take time over the holidays to read that and have an opportunity then to, to give us input over the next few months as we look at this. So thank you and best wishes for the rest of the year to everybody. And we'll see you after the new year.
I wanted to acknowledge that the Community Foundation of Jones County celebrated their 20th year anniversary virtually. And so congrats to them. And if, I think all of our counselors know that they, their presence in our community allows a lot of not-for-profit work within our social services arena, as well as other arenas here locally. So we say congratulations to the Community Foundation of Jones County within their 20th year. So the Bravo Awards happened or, and maybe still happened. And so I probably can't get too much information, but for anyone that has received a Bravo Award from Think Iowa City, congratulations. I will acknowledge three people that I was, that I attended. And that is Kate Brown, who actually was very influential in getting a lot of the, the literature out through social media and also on the website through Better Together. All of the efforts relating to coronavirus, some business.
All of the efforts relating to coronavirus, some business messaging to support local, which Councilor Taylor just talked about. Here recently, Jamie Powers, who is the owner of Deluxe Bakery. And she even started, was a part of the Food for Love here locally. And I and then another, the last person that I was a part of was, and actually the first person, was Supervisor Roy Sam Porter. Who is just awesome and amazing. And so congrats to all of these individuals and to everyone out there that have or will be receiving a Bravo Award. Secretly, other than that. Yeah, that's all I want to say. And happy holidays to everybody within our community. Mask up and stay safe.
Let me make one more comment real quickly. I'm sorry. I I know everybody does a lot of giving at the end of the year and that is absolutely wonderful. And I encourage everybody who possibly can to donate wherever their heart and mind takes them. I do want to mention one thing that depending on your news source, people may not have heard about, and that was the fire at the lodge. Which is housing for six individuals who are men who have mental health issues. It's part of the Shelter House program. It's the very much a supportive environment. They they came together through Shelter House to make this their home. And to support each other and help each other and and accept the social services and support that Shelter House gave. And this is a devastating fire. Fortunately, nobody was physically injured. But as you can imagine, for people who do have those kinds of mental health issues, this was incredibly devastating and emotional issue for them. Shelter House is very much in need of help to support them. And so you can donate online. They they are taking some odd, some gift cards, I think, is maybe their first choice, as well as cash to help these individuals. So if you hadn't heard about it and you're still looking for places to donate to before the end of the year. I would certainly encourage you to look at Shelter House and specifically for the residents of the lodge. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for raising that, Susan. Fair with the lodges is a really important supportive community and it's really basically unlivable now.
Yep. Thank you. All right, we are on to. Item seventeen. And Jeff Ruin, any comments from you, our city manager?
Not tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, and our assistant city manager, Ashley.
Hi, I just wanted to say thanks to council for all the work that you put in this year as well. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Eleanor, our city attorney, city attorney.
I'll just echo that. It's been a heck of a year and and let's hope twenty twenty-one is on the uphill go. And I'm gonna drive down Rita, Rita Lynn Lane or whatever the twinkly place is on my way home.
Awesome. I would probably be behind you. All right, city clerk Kelly, thanks for all that you're doing in the background, keeping these Zoom meetings, but.
Hopefully, nobody noticed that we had Zoom glitches tonight. So if you didn't, then we did our jobs. Thanks to Lily for being my backup.
Yes, yes, thanks to you and Lily for all the work you do to keep our Zoom meetings going. So thanks to you all. All right, if nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Fergus.
All in favor for this being our last meeting for twenty twenty, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? We are done. Thanks to all of you and we'll see you next year.